We'll call this meeting to order, Winnetka Village Council Study Session, June 10th, 2025. Let's mute our cell phones and other electronic devices if you would, and I would ask Deputy Manager Kristin Kazinas to do a roll call for attendance.
Trustee Orsek, present. Trustee Myers.
Present.
Trustee Dahlman.
Present.
President Dearborn.
Here.
Trustee Handler.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. We'll go to item two, Public Comment, and I'd ask if anyone in the audience wants to speak about an item not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and give us your thoughts.
Ted Winichenko, you know, I had thought that we could perhaps find a way to move forward as a community, as a council that represents everyone, not just one person on the lake. How, I was wrong. It occurred to me that the Park District, as a good neighbor, had allowed a fence to be installed along their property, in their property, to allow the construction of a fence on Ishbia's lot. That fence is done. There's a line of arborvitae, two stories tall. So I said to the Park District, hey, fence is done. There's no reason for that temporary construction. Tonight's on Village, on Park District property. You should remove it. They said, woo, the village is saying we have to keep it. That's what they basically said. So then I wrote an email to you all, and I said, hey, tell the Park District that there's no reason they need to have a fence on their land. Would the village order any other private landowner to put someone else's fence on their land? I doubt it. And instead, what it occurred to me, what I noticed, is that you guys all met to consider how you were gonna threaten and bully me. And that's what it is. And so I get this email the other day, saying that you've consulted with the state's attorney and that you've determined that I would be violation of a Class B misdemeanor if I go back to the lake. That's what the state's attorney said. You know what? I'm gonna be sending a bunch of FOIA requests tomorrow because it's complete BS. So what did you tell the state's attorney? Did you tell them that we were, that I never was on private land? Because the statute that you're citing says I was on private land and I wasn't. But it's really all about bullying. It's no different than fascism. It's no different than what Trump is doing and Bondi are doing by selectively applying laws to punish that they don't, people they don't like. It's no different than what Nazis did with the Gestapo, threatening families and taking them away out without be unlawfully. You guys said I would be, your words, will be immediately arrested for a Class B misdemeanor. Do you either don't care about the law, or you don't know it, or there you're just being blind to it? Because as you may, or you should have been aware, as the attorney should have been aware, the Safety Act just passed a few years ago prohibits you from arresting people for violate Class B misdemeanor violations. It says, law enforcement shall, that's a mandatory word, not a permissive word, shall issue a citation in lieu of custodial arrest upon property for those accused of a, that is not a felony or Class A misdemeanor. Well, unless, you know, reasonably believes they pose a threat, is necessary because the activity could persist, but since I haven't gotten a citation, if there's, or of course, accuses of obvious medical or mental health issues. Yeah, I mean, I guess you can apply that to me. But it is bullying, plain and simple. It is taking the power of the state to silence dissent, and it is terrible. And you all are part of it. You can believe that you're good people? I'm guessing that Trump and Bondi think they're good people, although they seem to act like they don't give a shit about anyone, especially the most, the most at-risk people in our society. This is obviously orders of magnitude different. I'm leaving. But I mean, I was, I was, I went from being kind of concerned, thinking that we could maybe work together on the fence and get some, to being completely outraged by this totally inappropriate action. I was gonna stay for the rest of the meeting because there are some things I wanted to talk about, but I don't feel like.
Anyone else like to come and speak at Public Comment? Okay, we will close Public Comment, and we'll go to item three, which is a general village council discussion regarding policy matters for future agendas. Let the record note that Trustee Apitoff has joined. Tonight, village council will be reviewing committed projects, previously identified policies and projects, and new policy initiatives. Village Manager Bayhan is under the weather, so Deputy Manager Kazinas will lead this discussion, and you all received, and it was posted on the website, a list of the projects that are under consideration here, that are in the pipeline, that have been talked about. There's a lot, lot on the table here, and so we'll, if you have specific questions or whatever, or thoughts on any of these projects, that's fine, but we'll let Kristin kind of move through them, and then we can have a conversation of other, people's other thoughts, other things on their mind, and.
Bob, just a question on, so the committed projects, is the objective that they're all going forward? Are we trying to prioritize? Are there issues around resource availability?
All of the above.
Get into?
All of the above. And Kristin, we'll try to put some chronology around these when we'll be addressing them, and staff bandwidth, time staff has to address all these. It is limited, and so some of this is maybe aspirational, some of it is on the docket that we'll be addressing sooner rather than later. And then I want to think about, you know, long-term projects, but also some things that we should be considering that just benefit residents day-to-day today. Things that we can maybe knock off and maybe improve the quality of life here in Winnetka without too much heavy lifting. So think about all sides of this.
Are we also prioritizing these?
Yes. Yeah, to a certain extent, we are. I mean, some of these, and Kristin will get into it, some of them are underway.
Yeah.
And we know that. And so Kristin, why don't you take over here?
Thank you, President Dearborn. So we're going to start with the ones that are in progress. In the committed projects, the slide is gonna keep us on track here. I'm gonna have a few brief comments about where we are. So with the West Side Stormwater Conveyance Design and Build, the construction projects that are being proposed for 2026 would include the reconstruction of Willow Road. The project limits for this project would be from the Western Municipal Limits to Providence. Work activities include water main replacement, storm sewer installation, intersection improvements at Hibbert and Willow, and reconstruction of the roadway. The next project for 2026 would be.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
That, I'm sorry, that project on Willow Road, that is currently, is that budgeted in the storm sewer project, or is that a separate?
That is budgeted in the Stormwater Fund.
Okay, great.
And that is the next part of the project. It aligns with the work on Willow Road with the water main replacement as well.
Thank you.
That would be in the water fund.
Okay, great.
Okay. So also in 2026, we're planning the improvements related to conveyance on the Tree Streets area. They would include storm water and roadway improvements on Cherry from Hibbert to Glendale, Ash from Hibbert to just east of Providence, Berkeley from Willow to Cherry, Glendale from Willow to Cherry, Rosewood from Willow to Cherry, and Providence from Willow to Ash. Our goal is to release the bid for both the Willow Road Reconstruction Project and the Tree Street Conveyance Project at the same time, and our hope would be to get the same contractor and save some costs based on the overall scope of combining the projects. So related to this is an update on where we stand with the Willow Road Jurisdictional Transfer. As of.
Just for clarity, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
The Tree Street Conveyance is really bullet point one, West Side Stormwater Conveyance Design and Build. Okay, right?
Yes, we're just.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if anybody is watching or listening, just to, and has these materials, so the first two, we're gonna try to bid out together for cost savings in 2026, for shovel-ready 2026.
Correct. And so when we're talking, the first three bullet points are really all related.
Okay.
Right? Because the West Side Stormwater Conveyance Design and Build also would include the Willow Road Reconstruction, and the jurisdictional transfer for Willow Road is related.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
What's our timing, Kristin, in terms of? What's the timing in terms of putting these out for bid?
Our goal would be to get these out for bid as soon as we have the construction documents together. So the exact timing, I would have to get back to you on, because engineering is still working on formulating the specifications for the bid document.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, so related to the Willow Road Jurisdictional Transfer, as of today, the village has submitted a response to IDOT on the negotiations for transferring Willow Road to the village. We're waiting for IDOT's response on a letter we submitted to meet with their lands and acquisition group about getting the needed easements on the Cook County Forest Preserve property and a few corners near Hibbert and Willow. The state has asked the village to take the lead on these negotiations. And regarding the funding for this project, there is a combination of various grants and IDOT contributions. So Rebuild Illinois funds, we're anticipating 803,000. There's STP grant funding for 5.5 million. Rob is working on coordinating the max payment that we could receive under these STP funds with our Northwest Municipal Conference Representative. An IDOT contribution, this will be based on what the final contract amount is, and IDOT has indicated that they will help with whatever the remaining unfunded portion of this project is. And we've finally submitted for an IDOT 2024 Local Road Grant, and we submitted this grant at the request of IDOT. So as you can see, we're trying to secure funding for this from various sources to be able to achieve moving forward with the goal. And since we are sequencing this project with the infrastructure improvements, it will allow us to 100% complete all of the impacted intersections on Willow Road. And the reason we want to do this is we received the Hazard Mitigation Grant and Grants for Willow Road, both of which need to be obligated in 2026. So unless there's a hold on that Hazard Mitigation Grant funding, that could delay the Streets projects for the stormwater, we need that grant funding secured so we can scale the work to the funding available. Recall, this is on a pause, not a cancellation. So we're monitoring, and that is an important aspect of being able to proceed with the project, whether we get that grant funding or not.
Kristin, who's our point person on this? Is it Tim?
Tim is the point person for grants, yes. So these projects will be presented during the annual budget, and we anticipate coming to the council early next year with the bid results. That exact timing, as I mentioned, yet to be determined.
Before you jump off to Stormwater, and not that I'm pushing this or not, but there is a plan at some point for a boathouse out in the entrance to Winnetka, about the lagoons, that was designed and reviewed.
On Tower Road?
On, on Tower Road. Which was pretty, it was kind of a nice entryway to Winnetka, and it was a beautiful design. I think it was Paul Constant who designed it, and I just didn't know if we had.
Wasn't that the forest preserve within the?
It was a.
It was proposed.
It was proposed, it was a.
Forest preserve.
It was part of that plan with the forest preserve. They wanted that as a part of the deal.
Boat launch, yeah.
Yeah. And I didn't know, we just haven't discussed, I thought we threw it out to where it was, or what we've done with it, or nothing, or?
So I don't have a status update on that, but I can definitely make a note, and we can follow up with council on that.
Yeah, okay.
I think we approved the appearance or something.
The design, yeah, I think we did.
The design, but it was ultimately a forest preserve or Cook County project.
Yeah, I didn't know if we ran out of money, or?
I think we were willing to do it because the reality is, a significant number of Winnetka residents would benefit and use it.
I think they were pushing us to do that, yeah.
I can work to get an update and give council an update on the status.
I know.
Okay. Okay, so next, we'll move on to the East Side Stormwater Planning. The planning on this project continues, and we anticipate finishing this phase of the planning work by the end of this fiscal year. Strand and Engineering, led by Jim Bernal, have been engaging the regulatory AD agencies, including the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, the IEPA, IDNR, and this work continues. We've also been working with Nutria High School regarding storage options on the East Campus that will be necessary for detention and water quality improvements. When the storage options have been finalized, we will proceed to further public engagement with our stakeholders and residents in these areas. Once the planning phase has concluded, we would anticipate a study session for this one to present the recommendations for the entire East Side planning area, along with estimated costs and phasing of the construction. So this is a study session that would be required.
And you would expect that Q4 of this year?
Q4 would be a good estimate, yes.
Okay.
So next, we'll discuss the Hibbert Preserve Wetland Grow-In. With the license agreement with Cook County Forest Preserve, with an obligation to monitor the grow-in and restoration to a functioning wetland for a period of five years, staff is coordinated with the county for inspections and reseeding with the vendor responsible for this work. So we're just in the monitoring phase with that one.
We call it the Hibbert Preserve now.
Pretty much.
Yes. It's growing in really nicely. So next on our list is an update on Advanced Metering Infrastructure, AMI. So we do have a timeline updated for this project. Our goal is to have the project completed by the end of 2026, and we're tracking to be finished by July 4th, 2026. Fireworks.
So by completed, mean every meter and every house will be replaced by July 2026?
By July 4th of 2026.
Wow.
Yeah.
The end of 2026 officially, so.
Official. Well, that's, she's giving her, it's an on-time arrival sort of buffer.
We need to have some contingency in the plan.
I wouldn't have dropped that July 4th date, Kristin.
No, that's awesome. So that's gonna be critical to all the solar and.
The behind the meter, yeah.
Behind the meter stuff.
Yes, and all of those sustainability initiatives that we talked about, it's critical to have these advanced meters.
Great.
So we have kicked off, we have ordered the pilot meters for the 20 initial in the test with varying installations to make sure that the software is working as designed. And the Phase 1, which is the next 300 meters, will commence in the fall. We're targeting October through December of this year. And then Phase 2, the rollout of the remaining meters, will commence in January of '26 through June.
How many meters is that? Four, four, how many?
Four.
Forty?
Four thousand something.
Five hundred or something, yeah, I thought so, okay.
So I can get to you an exact date amount.
That's great, yeah. So Kristin, as part of the rollout, is there some kind of an education program for homeowners, you know, what capabilities they'll have?
Yes, there is going to be significant engagement with the community, with explaining the program, the timing, and those communications are currently being developed.
Kristin, would you remind me, how were the first 300 chosen?
That is a good question. I'll have to get back to you on that. I know the first 20 were volunteers.
One on arborvitae?
Yes. And we.
Test the old infrastructure to see if it handles it.
It was important.
Not talking about people here, we're talking about people too.
To have a representative sample, so it's not just residences. It's all over for the first test to make sure. So I can get back to you on how the Phase 1 is happening.
That's all I need to know, that it is sort of a representative sample throughout the village. Thank you.
And I hate to go back on this, but do we have to, the city crews, village crews have to get into the homes? So they're, it's dependent, rollout will be dependent on people's cooperation in giving access to their homes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so that's why the communication piece of this is so critical, because it's the water and the electric meters.
Not to jump to the next item, but is there a way where we can start to identify some of the homes that may also need lead line replacements to use as an opportunity to educate those homeowners if we're gonna be talking to them and in their houses?
Yes, I think that is the plan, to work to coordinate that, because if we're, to your point, in the home swapping out meters, that would be an ideal educational opportunity. So lead service line replacements, staff has been working diligently to coordinate the lead service lines with the programmed water main and road improvement capital projects. It takes significant time to, as we discussed, manage that engagement with residents, because from the village-owned portion into the house is the resident responsibility. And water and electric also administers the program for residents who are proactively wishing to replace their lead service lines as a one-off project, not coordinated with a village water main project. And this will continue to be an annual budgeted item, because the inventory of the lead service lines, we're required to post and update on the village website, so that information is available. And we did have strong interest in the voluntary program this year, so do anticipate that that will be part of our annual budget discussion, what the funding should be for that.
A quick question on that one is, can you remind me when the date is that everything is required to be changed out, and are we likely to hit that target?
Yes, so from when the legislation was passed, it was within 15 years, and based on our village projects and the interest that we have seen with the voluntary implementation, we are not concerned about being unable to meet that deadline.
What kind of burden is it putting on Nick and his team? Or is this, are we helping, getting outside help to do all these lines?
We've been doing it in-house, and the biggest challenge has been in the communication with the residents and coordination when we're doing a village water main replacement, because the coordination has to happen with everyone, and then the restoration of the area in the parkway can't occur until everyone has completed their part of the project. So if you can imagine trying to connect with, no pun intended, and work with all the residents to ensure that their connections have happened before we can finally sign off on the project, it just takes more time than it did previously.
I think if you're really gonna try and get this done by July 4th, I'm not sure what the communication is, but there are a lot of people that go to Florida for a long time, and if, I'm just wondering if they have understanding, they're not chasing their tail.
So with regards to the lead service line replacements, that's a 15-year runway, the, AMI? Yeah. Good point.
Can I make a suggestion on the lead service line for consideration? So right now, there's a list, there's a waiting list. I'm on the waiting list. But if somebody wants to be on the waiting list and they're at number 140, but they want to redo their driveway, shouldn't we consider letting them be at 140, redo their driveway, redo the lines, and then when they would have come up on the list to be approved for the rebate from the village, why couldn't they be considered and get a rebate at that point? I mean, so for instance, let's say I wanted to redo my, just as an example, and I'm not asking this for me, but let's say I want to redo my driveway. I have to wait, if I want to get the rebate, I have to wait until my name comes up, but I could redo my driveway, get all the competitive bids, submit them to the village, and then when my name would have come up in the waiting list roster, then I would get my rebate, if I qualify. Something to think about.
And council does give direction to staff about how the program is administered, as council did discuss the initial rebate, so that's certainly something that we could bring forward for discussion.
It's just a thought, because.
It's sort of common sense.
Yeah, I mean, someone, someone has to redo their driveway for whatever reason, it's all busted up, they're on the list, and they're not, they're just waiting to get call, I don't know. It's something to think about.
I mean, there's nothing that prohibits that person for paying, if you're willing to pay for your driveway, you probably can afford your line.
Tina, there's no doubt about that. There's no doubt about that, but it just seems like it could be an incentive, fair, but it also could be an incentive for people to get on the list. The goal is here to swap out the lead lines, so.
It's fast as possible.
Anyway.
And the length of the list is driven by the funding, right? So that discussion also can happen at the budget.
Okay.
Okay, and last on this slide, we have the AT&amp;T Undergrounding Project. So legal and staff are working on the final settlement agreement with AT&amp;T to work on undergrounding their telephone wires in conjunction with burying the village-owned electric lines. As the strategy comes into focus, we'll need to discuss the annual amount of undergrounding to pursue and the programming, how to work this into the capital plan. We would anticipate this would be presented during the annual budget, and we may need a separate study session depending on the timing of the settlement with AT&amp;T, because we'll need to fund our part of the work.
And we're still thinking of Tower Road as our starting point?
Tower Road is our starting point.
That's a big deal. How many years in the making? Decades in the making?
Yeah.
Yeah, big deal.
So next, and continued on the committed projects, work continues on the Hubbard Woods Streetscape Plan with the IDOT Jurisdictional Transfer possibility and funding for that.
So this came up today in the chamber, and I didn't have a great response, so in terms of, have businesses received notices of a resurfacing project? Because there was some discussion about that, so maybe you can just address that as part of this.
So that project is an IDOT project, and the last that we heard as of last week, IDOT had not scheduled the definitive date for that work. So we're at their mercy, since it's their project, not ours. So to my knowledge, there has not been a date identified. As soon as it is, we are going to be communicating that to the business community.
On that front, I think we would all agree that Hubbard Woods is a priority. Right now, we're working on the garage, Metro's working on it, Streetscape, jurisdictional transfer. We have two trustees that are Hubbard Woods liaisons. I think the two of you should maybe get together with village staff on some of these issues, and just in terms of communication with the council and potentially to the public, let's kind of bring together holistically this Hubbard Woods effort. You know, I don't know that there's work to do with the liaisons, but I think that you are eyes and ears with the council, and I think there's a lot, we just want to make it a focus.
I think it's a great idea. I would also like to sit down with Tina and maybe Kristin and talk about the places like where Boris's was. I mean, the fact, it makes, the fact that it's not being, how many years has it been? 10?
At least.
More than that.
That is, that, there just needs to be another pressure, pressure, this is ridiculous.
Yeah.
We're gonna make this look great, and you still, these guys, these landlords are not gonna do a thing.
Okay. Well, a couple, let's hold that thought, because we talked about that a little bit today, too. Do we have, have we, it sounds like we are having good productive conversations with IDOT about the Willow Road transfer. Is there any conversations going on with IDOT on Green Bay?
Yes, we've already started that conversation, and we're hoping that the Willow Road project will be a good leverage and lead right into the Hubbard Woods section, right? Because we were successful on Willow, let's engage on Hubbard Woods.
And I'm not suggesting that our liaisons step on our staff toes by any means, but I do think that there's enough going on there that we need to have a major, either it's a communication effort, or it's bring it all together kind of an effort to make sure that people understand we're pushing Hubbard Woods. It is, it is their time, and they need to know it. And when you talk to people about the metro station, they're fired up about that. And when you talk to people about the metro station, they're fired up about that, you know, so we, we just need to make that a priority.
Yeah, and, and I think one of the things, you know, I'm curious about some of the vacant spaces, right? They're privately owned, there's not a lot we can do. But Cook County did change their tax abatement program or their tax relief that they gave for vacant retail spaces.
For some reason.
Yeah, that was in the last year, so, you know, they're no longer getting a reduced tax bill, and so maybe that, I, one of the things is, I think, you know, one of the issues, not to get off track on Hubbard Woods, but the CIBC building, CIBC is very interested in getting out of their lease. The building owner wasn't so interested, but I think there's some movement there, and it may be because of the property taxes. You know, they're not getting a reduction for a vacant building, so maybe that-
That'd be great.
Yes, can start moving things around.
Right.
And the Killian building is going to be replaced.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, there's going to be-
Yeah, there's, so I think you may start to see, you know, some movement with some vacant storefronts, especially ones that don't have anything upstairs going on.
We've had consistent interest in that property, from what I understand.
Yes.
Liz, yeah?
Yes.
Good. That'd be great.
Okay, so with regards to where we are with the Hubbard Woods streetscape, the Phase One engineering should conclude this year. And then we will need a study session regarding the funding options for the Business District Revitalization Fund, including whether to introduce a home rule sales tax dedicated to funding the capital and maintenance costs of the business districts. We anticipate studying, studying this in advance of the budget this year, and, and would likely need a study session to delve into that more closely.
Okay, but we, we're not likely to institute a sales tax without going out to the businesses and talking about it.
There would be, need to be engagement with the businesses as well.
I mean, that, you know, we have not done that yet, I assume. We have not been talking to businesses about this concept.
Not yet, because we need council's discussion about whether they would be open to considering that. Because recall, we brought it forward in the budget last year, and then there was the desire to have more discussion about that. And with the Business District Revitalization Fund being the primary funding source for the streetscape projects, there needs to be a sustainable revenue source if we're going to continue funding some of these projects. So more discussion will need to happen at council and then also with the business community.
Kristen, as, as part of the study session, I mean, this is, this is a project that's different than the East and West Elm in that the impact that it will have on the businesses will be much more significant given the traffic. So I would encourage that as part of the study session, we delegate time to what, what would that impact be? How might we, you know, mitigate it as much as possible? What can we do? You know, I think indicating and showing that we're not just looking at this as paving a street and taking over a street, but it's keeping the business district vibrant, I think, you know, would be an important part of that study session.
That's a good point, and the impact will be significant because in addition to the streetscape, the water main needs to be replaced. And so that, there will be an impact. So discussing that and engaging the business community will be critical.
I know, as I recall though, when we started down this path, we were, I think, I know, I was surprised, we were surprised that the businesses knew that and were supportive of the more, I'll say, more extreme solution, which was doing the major infrastructure and jurisdictional transfer. Now, I know they might say that, but when it actually, shovels start hitting the pavement might be a different story, so we certainly do want to work with them.
Okay, so next is Village Facilities Plan and Projects. The village has undertaken a village facility study to identify ongoing maintenance and capital improvements for all of our facilities. A significant project this year is the rehab of the Hubbard Woods parking facility. That work continues and is being analyzed for bidding and approval by the council this year. We will begin to incorporate the study's findings for the more major repair in the FY '26 budget.
Is there, are there any surprises that you know about?
So I wouldn't say surprises, just there are significant repairs that need to happen.
More than anticipated?
I think that's yet to be determined.
No spoiler alerts.
Yes.
I don't want to surf sites.
Yes, exactly. So next is Green Bay Road Corridor Plan with Kennelworth. Kennelworth, after a bit of a delay with the transition in their village manager role to another community, is beginning to work on this plan again and has submitted the work conducted thus far to IDOT for their review and comment. We expect a study session regarding this issue sometime early in FY '26.
So this is, can you just explain the scope of this? I'm kind of new to this one.
Yes, so Kennelworth engaged with the village several years ago, expressing a desire to work collaborati, collaboratively on the Green Bay Road corridor. They're doing a streetscape project, and they would like it to continue with where it crosses over into the Weneka streetscape. So we're working together.
That avenue or even going beyond that? Or am I just wrong?
Weneka Avenue.
Down to Park Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Is it on the website?
I would have to check and see if it's on the website. There was significant work, and then the village manager role transitioned, and there was a bit of a pause. So we are picking that up again.
There's like landscape, you know, proposals for like landscape islands, hurricane changes. It would make the whole corridor look less-
Pretty, pretty.
Yeah. It would look, make it look really pretty, and I think there was attempt to get better parking.
I, I believe so, and there was public engagement as well. There were some open houses that were conducted with feedback from the business community and residents.
Got it.
So I can circulate where the current plan stands. We all know and have had much discussion about the IMEA power contract extension. The next on the list is the Elder Outfall Pipe Repair. The village has gone out to bid for this repair of the pipe under the pier and anticipates bringing this bid result to you at the June 17th meeting. Engineering is working with the Park District to coordinate the work.
As a part of that, have we figured out if our contractors are going to work with the Park District to get the cleanup going?
I don't have an update on that, but I do know that at June 17th, we'll have more information.
Thank you.
So as part of that bid process, to have it completed ASAP so that it can be open?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the goal. So then regarding Tower Road Pier and the Bluff Restoration, we're working with the Resilient Coastal Projects Initiative, our CEPI, to determine the scope of the repair of the pier and the bluff restoration behind the plant. They're providing technical assistance and design options with grant funding also a possibility. And we anticipate that this will be a study session in 2026.
When do we think we're getting that fixed?
We will need to look at the study session in '26 to determine what the recommendation is and what the timeline would be. That's to be determined.
Okay, so there, I was, I was worried about the state of it. Is it, can it get worse, or is it kind of what it is?
So they're looking at a holistic approach and what the available opportunities would be, not just to look at the pier separately or the bluff separately or the intake wells, but a whole project that would address all three. So unfortunately, that does delay, but if we're able to get an approach that addresses all three, that also improves the environmental conditions and gets grant funding, it would be worth considering that holistic approach.
I was going to ask for an update. Have, are we already applying for the grant funding, or do we have to have the whole project?
We need to have the project designed to be able to apply for the grant funding because it needs to be the shovel ready. Here's our plan, will you fund this plan? But they seemed up to mistake based on the scope and the improvement in the environmental impacts, that it would be one that would likely score highly on the available grant Next is the Park District Centennial and Elder Special Use. These projects continue to consume substantial resources of the staff and the boards and commissions. The Centennial project will appear before the Design Review Board in July, and then will come to council thereafter. This could occur in August or September this year. And Elder is currently in the staff review phase of the project. Next is the Electric Generation Study. As Nick Nari noted in his presentation, we've awarded a contract for this study for the plant and the village. This work, we anticipate continuing through the end of 2025, and it will come to the council in '26 for a study session to review the results and next steps. Next in committed projects, we have the Hubbard Woods Train Station Improvements. After 15 years, we're finally almost at the construction phase for this project. The DRV will finalize its review this month, and then it will come to council for approval. Once the approval from the council's awarded, construction will commence next year for the replacement of the platforms, the pedestrian bridge replacement and new connecting walkways, the installation of elevators for access and improvements to the station. Funding was secured by Metro via the state about three years ago.
And Kristin, so the-
Well, it was a UP issue.
Government moves slowly.
This is a Metro project, though, right?
Yeah, this is.
Yes.
So DRV is looking at this, I think, on the 19th, I believe. Is it likely to visit us in July, do you think?
It, it could potentially come in July at the meeting on July 15th, depending on if DRV takes one meeting to finalize one more meeting.
This is their second meeting.
Yeah.
It's their second meeting.
So likely it would be on the July, is that 15th or 17th?
Okay.
Second meeting in July.
Okay.
Okay, next on the list is the Affordable Housing Plan Update. The village received notice that our affordable housing plan needs to be updated and submitted by September 30th of this year. The Plan Commission is beginning to review the plan for updates so that it complies with the state statute. Once the Plan Commission concludes its work, we anticipate the plan being presented during August or September to the village council for approval.
And our deadline on that again is what?
September 30th.
September 30th, okay.
Next is the Engineering and Design for the Spruce Street Outlet Access. The original stairs to the Spruce Street Outlet were removed since they had significantly deteriorated and were dangerous, which caused a public safety concern. Progress on revisiting this project was delayed due to the lakefront ordinance work all of FY '23 and the resulting moratorium for all the projects in the steep slope areas. In FY '25, we budgeted funds for the study and design of replacement stairs, and this work is underway with engineering design consultants. We anticipate we will have a cost determined soon that we'll be able to factor into the FY '26 capital plan.
Is this the, is it Maple, though, that people want reopened, or is this a Spruce?
Cherry?
Cherry's open, Spruce is the one that-
Spruce is the one that was the biggest headache.
Okay, got it.
Okay, now-
Could be possibly, if it goes together, when would it be completed?
So if it was factored into the FY '26 budget, I would anticipate construction to start in the spring of '26. Next is the Water Rate Study. Due to the escalation in pricing for water main work and also lead replacements, we are undertaking a study to update the 100% funding model for this program. Inflation escalation was significant and will need this information to factor into our rate projections for the coming years. This information will be ready to be considered when we review the FY '26 budget. Emergency Operation Plans Update. Chief Ripka and the Fire Department are taking the lead on updating all of our emergency operations plan, so they reflect current conditions and remain eligible for grant funding if an emergency were to result in significant damages. We expect to present this updated plan for approval later in FY '25. Several weeks ago, we attended the tabletop facilitated for all of New Trier Township, and we are not alone in working to update our emergency operations plan. Fiscal planning, following up from the last budget cycle, as I mentioned, we'll need to review the funding for the Business District Revitalization Fund. We'll also need to discuss approving the replacement of the grocery tax at the local level, since the state is no longer levying and collecting these tax, the grocery 1% tax for municipalities starting January 1 of '26. Options for revenue allocations will be considered, including the potential home rule sales tax that would be dedicated to the Business District Revitalization Fund like we talked about. And examples of funding for that revenue would be the Hubbard Woods Streetscape and the potential post office project.
So the grocery tax is going to be on our agenda?
It's coming up in July.
July?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
With regards to THC and Kratom, later this summer, we plan to invite Stu Weiss from L. Rod Friedman to present information on this topic that was also presented at the annual L. Rod Friedman seminar. His presentation will further inform the context of the regulations at the state level, and more discussion can be had with the council at that time. The Customer Relationship Management CRM system. Our Public Works Director, Tom Powers, is leading an interdepartmental team to research the best technology platform for implementing a customer service management system. We expect to have this work completed in time to budget for this program in FY '26. This is something trustee Handler had mentioned a while ago. The GoGov is an example of one of those where residents can, through an app or through a web portal, report concerns, and we can facilitate a work order system to plan and report back to the resident who reported the concern that it was completed. So an example would be a pothole. Rather than just calling Public Works and saying, hey, there's a pothole, the resident could snap a picture of it, drop a pin on the GPS. Public Works would get a work order automatically generated when they went out and repaired it, hopefully very timely. They would take a picture saying, it's done, and that resident would get an alert saying, thank you, and here's the picture of the completed work, so.
Nice. Kristin, before we go on to development projects, there's been talk over, I mean, going back to when I served on the council before, about bike routes, adding more bike routes, more east-west bike routes. Where does that stand? I, you know, the Park District, I know, did a big study, kind of presented that back in 2016, maybe, 2017, something like that?
I think it's part of the comp plan.
This was addressed in the 2040 comp plan.
Yeah.
And at this moment, I can't remember what all of it was, but various routes were studied and determinations made whether they would- studied and determinations made whether they would be able to safely hold a bike lane or not. So we do have a lot of that information. It'd have to be pulled up again from the 2040 plan.
Is that kind of in the pipeline of saying, okay, now let's execute on?
I think...
All of them, some of them?
Well, I think it's, we've got a task list of implementation from things in the comp plan and so I think that's one of the things that is a big thing that we've got to talk, we'll have to talk about, the implementation of the comp plan recommendations.
Yeah, that was the other thing, is just the execution of the 2040 comp plan. That's not in the committed projects, but is there some pipeline of things underway?
Yes, and we'll need to discuss the timing of when that happens and the scheduling of that because there's multiple areas, you know, the sustainability pillar floor, for example, as well as the zoning code rewrite. There's some significant action steps in the 2040 plan. And to your point, they're not on the committed projects yet. As you can see, the expanse of the projects we have have taken up a lot of the available bandwidth, so that's part of the discussion tonight is figuring out council's priorities and how do we balance including those into the full staff work plans.
There was a, I think Scott, this we're referring to, I think back in 2014, there was a cycling plan.
Yeah.
And the conclusion of the, the direction was that Elm Street would be the main thoroughfare for cyclists to go east to west. But the council at the time, in conjunction with public safety, deemed it to be an unsafe bike route.
Right.
And the reality is that our east-west streets are narrow.
Yeah.
And that's just the fact. And so it was just put on ice at that point. Could it be revisited? The streets have not been made wider. The cars have not gotten smaller, so my guess is it's still a safety issue. But in fact, some caucus representatives were talking to the village, I believe, about that issue and whether or not to revisit it.
Yeah.
And I don't know what came of that.
It seems to come up pretty regularly.
I would just encourage you, go look in the comp plan because it was really thoroughly discovered, discussed, and so I just, I don't want us to get into that situation where we go back to old plans, you know, like...
Maybe, maybe there's another way to look at it.
Well, I just, I would recommend that we dedicate a study session, if there is any time, to looking at the comp plan for like work priorities for implementation and then we can talk about that.
It's a good point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the one thing that's changed since this was discussed or started 15 years ago is I think people in general are more aware of cyclists between divvy bikes and things like that. I think drivers and some of the safety concerns certainly would still exist, but I think drivers are a little more conscious of cyclists and supportive of cyclists.
Those electric bikes are changing the game.
Well, okay, that's, that's another whole topic.
I'm gonna second what Tina said and like this is a whole discussion that took up multiple sessions and, and the short answer is a lot of the east-west still is not safe.
Yeah.
But there was a broader discussion and maybe other ideas about signage and painting and things like that that is in the comp plan that we can address at some time.
We should slot in a study session for comp plan issues.
Yes.
Right, I think this is part of the comp plan prioritization, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Agreed, yep.
Okay. Okay, so next, we're on the list of committed redevelopment projects and we don't need to go through each of these individually, but these are the current private development projects that are underway.
Lot of action.
Can you give an update on the Engels and Volkers? Engel and Volkers project?
Engel and Volkers has had a bit of a delay in their construction. They've had an issue with the way the construction has commenced compared to the plans, so they're working with their engineer to get that resolved.
One Wenek is, I'm thinking another building's coming down today.
Yes, they, they are moving forward. They're scheduling an official groundbreaking for the 18th, so that's going well, so.
Two buildings are down at this point, yeah.
Lots, lots happening. So then, this slide talks about previously identified policies and projects that we can discuss a brief update on each. So the post office planning process, the council will need to devote time to discussing how you would like to approach this project and what process you'd like to undertake for selecting a design consultant. Recall, we had received multiple proposals for firms interested in working with the council and the village to move forward on this project. Also, we could consider establishing a working group or a committee charged with the planning engagement with residents as well. This project likely could take one and a half to two years before construction would commence because we saw, and I think the farmer's market participation would echo this, that there are a lot of strong and varied opinions about the site. And so that, that engagement piece and council involvement of what the next steps are is going to be a critical piece of that.
And I think that will be an upcoming study session.
Yes.
That's, you know, next three, four months, that will be a study session.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, hasn't, we did two detailed studies on use of the post office site over the last 20 years, right? I mean, I know Chris was involved in one. I think there was another one.
Way back one, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I just would hope we're not.
Well, it was part of the downtown plan discussion.
Yep.
It was part of the downtown, the name is, which I participated in. And then prior to that, there was planning ideas thrown out by you all I in 2013, so there've been probably three good plans.
I mean, if we're gonna do it again, I would like to not start from a clean sheet of paper, but let's take the...
Well, again, it's discussed in the comp plan.
The study session will bring everyone up to date on what's gone on in the past and where we are and how do we, you know, slot this in to move it forward as opposed to just kind of standing in place.
Spend two more years studying it and end up right back.
Exactly. This is clearly a priority issue for us to move forward. And so I would think August, maybe September study session is post office.
Yeah, I agree. If we start this too late, it's gonna be...
Well, we gotta move it on.
Gotta move it.
Definitely, definitely.
It's right in the middle of our town.
And the post office did reach out. They are requesting one more month extension on their lease. It currently expires July 31st. They're asking for August 31st. That will be coming forward to council at your next meeting.
Have they pulled any permits? Are they doing work?
So since it's the federal government, they don't need a permit.
Oh, yeah, I guess that's right.
So.
They just show up and start.
Right. Right. So next is the Zoning Ordinance Review and Updates. The current budget includes funding to begin the drafting update of the zoning ordinance. This is a long-needed project that Elrod Friedman could begin potentially this year. Further, council should identify areas within the zoning ordinance that could be further reviewed and amended and, as we mentioned, that's in the comprehensive plan.
I think this project, and it's very topical, Courtney was at a meeting last night of the zoning board where an issue came up. There is some low-hanging fruit that needs to be cleaned up. There's, there are items in the comp plan suggested for zoning. The two of you, Bridget and Tina, were involved in this. I had a long conversation with Matt Bradley on this today. And so I, the question is, how do we proceed? We could let Elrod Friedman sort of review the plan, review the zoning code, make suggestions on this low-hanging fruit, or we could get a small subset of council members, you know, maybe head of the Plan Commission, head of zoning board together with attorneys and staff and go that way. But I think that, I don't know that we need to have a full-blown study session on this. I think that there are some obvious areas to improve the zoning code and let's just, yeah, I'd say take a crack at the legal side and then maybe bring that to us and we can go from there.
Yeah, and I think even just a report for Scott's benefit or the trustees that weren't deep in discussion or haven't spent time on the Plan Commission and seen, you know, and ZBA, to see some of the things that kind of have bubbled up over the years as recommendations, you know, maybe just an overview of some of the recommendations from the comp plan as well as other things that people have identified, you know, staff has identified might be just helpful as an orientation memorandum or something as opposed to a study session.
Correct.
And Bob, as you were thinking of Elrod Friedman kind of taking this, it's, that they would also kind of grab ideas and suggestions that have come through the comp plan or come from the chairs of the various commissions.
Correct, correct. The people on the, on the ground, I think, understand it.
Yep.
And, I mean, there was an issue last night.
And integrate that into their...
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, there was an issue last night, Courtney could get into it, but it's a quirk of the zoning code. You know, it's, would you agree with that? I mean, it's just sort of a gap that needs to be closed and there are a number of those. The two of you know that. Kim, you know that.
Mm-hmm.
And so, again, I think as opposed to doing too much rocket science on this at our level, let's let it come down from them and staff and then we go from there. So, but I think we should do it. The next point, you can talk about the streamlining, Kristin?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a significant overlap of the responsibilities for the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the special use processes for various uses in the community. Before his departure, David Shone had suggested this could be streamlined, which could result in a process that's easier for the public to follow, more respectful of our volunteers' and commissioners' time and perhaps make it clearer for the applicant going through the process. So we'd like to discuss, is council interested in potentially pursuing ideas related to this?
Yeah, I actually thought this had already happened, so when I saw this, I was like, oh, wait, I thought we talked about this and we all agreed, but yeah, I think it's really important. I mean, reducing the amount of time that people have to go to see different commissions, I think it's just, you know, it, yeah, I mean, the fact that you have to go to two public hearings for that overlap, I think is not good and, you know, ultimately for those decisions that come up to us for final decision-making anyway, I think makes sense.
Okay. Okay, so then next.
Kristin, how are we going to address that one? That's different than the low-hanging fruit of the zoning code. Is that something that we will incorporate into a study session, perhaps? It's essentially, it's like the Plan Development Commission for special use permits. I mean, that's essentially what we're talking about.
So it's left up to the council. If you'd like to have a study session to further discuss how it could be achieved, we could do that. We could also have staff prepare a memo to explain what our recommendation would be of how it would be structured that then you could...
With the pros and cons of...
Right.
I think that's a good...
Eliminate something, what do we miss? What do we lose?
Yeah, right.
The concern is that the study sessions are getting backed up. We're now kind of...
I'm counting, I'm circling them. We're up to six or seven.
We're in the fifth November of this...
Right.
Correct. No, I think that, coming out...
And I think it's important for staff to gather the data and present some ideas and options with the pros and cons so that council's informed about what would be the best path forward when you get to the study session.
And this is not a novel concept. David, I had a conversation with David and he cited certain communities in our neck of the woods that do it this way. Others don't. So there, there are some precedents. There are some prototypes that we can look at and I think staff is probably the way to...
I just wanna see what we're giving up and what we're gaining.
This is one where that would take staff time, so we have to, you know, this is coming out of Scott and Ann, I believe.
Right.
You know, looking over all these projects and so we'd be respectful of their ability to do this.
And I think subsequent to this, the goal for staff would be to hear what we've said and what the priorities are and then be able to give back to the council, what we heard is these need a study session and here's our plan for the coming year. Kind of schedule out when the study sessions would be based on the priorities.
And by streamlining this process, it just doesn't streamline it for the applicants. It streamlines it a lot for staff. I mean, reduces the number of meetings, right?
Presentations, yeah.
Well, that's a whole nother little thing I have that I think, I don't know if people can voluntarily come to us with a concept plan like the PD process, you know?
That could be part of it.
Yeah, that could be part of it so that, you know, people get a temperature read. I know, we do that.
Didn't we already do that?
I thought we did, but...
We did.
For the church.
Not for the church, but don't we already have?
We already have.
It's for plan development, so if it's just...
I thought we did it for other things too, Tina.
Well, I know, we talked about it, that even if you were under 10,000 square feet, so not qualified, you know, by size to be a PD, that if an applicant wanted, which I thought...
I thought this was implemented while Chris was here.
We wanted to do it, I know that, that if an applicant was especially a nonprofit, wanted to come in and get a read before spending a lot of money going down that path.
I think it exists as kind of an open, like it was already, because we're PD, so.
Yeah, somebody could voluntarily come as a concept plan to get a temperature read.
Can we, can we check on that?
I will.
In place?
I'll look into that and report back.
I don't remember a smaller project coming in front of us, but...
Probably not. I think one, I'm thinking one.
I would have to look into that and get back to you with an answer.
Concept, I think everybody would support it and that'd be one of those things that could be under a streamlining idea because it would certainly reduce the number of times people have to bounce around.
So next on the list is the Crowne, formerly the Crowne Property. To complete the Crowe Island Conveyance System, the village acquired the property previously owned by the Crowe family on Sunset. This property was acquired via a grant from the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. Consideration should be given to future ownership and the use of the property that must include adjacent neighbors. Currently, the property has been restored and is open space adjacent to Crowe Island Park. So that is village-owned, that parcel.
So what are our options with that property?
That's what we need to discuss. What are our options, so?
Potentially slaying it to a homeowner?
Well, it's got infrastructure under there, so there's constraints from that aspect of it and right now it's just open space, so we want to engage the neighbors about potential future uses.
I thought, I thought that the loan was predicated on it remaining open space.
It's, so with regards to what does the open space look like, let me be a little more clear.
What does it look like?
So is, you know, some ideas has been, is it a pollinator garden?
Okay.
Is it an open space with just landscaping? So just understanding from the neighbors, some feedback of what, what is the open space like there? To just natural grasses, to planting pollinator species for the butterflies, so...
Not a playground or anything?
And, no.
We're, we're not anticipating an active space, an open space. More passive, more passive uses. So next is the Green Bay Trail Plan and Projects. So we were awarded a significant grant with help from Congressman Schneider for an improvement project along the Green Bay Trail. The funds will be managed at the state level through IDOT. Staff is working on a concept improvement project along the southern portion of the trail that would meet the requirements of the grant. This concept will be presented at a future study session. In addition, we should, we should revisit the Green Bay Trail conceptual master plan and update the IGA with the Park District for ongoing improvements and maintenance. Also, the Friends of the Green Bay Trail are working on a demonstration project that's underway and we should work with them to discuss their ongoing participation with the plan.
And I can tell you that the Friends of the Green Bay Trail would like to extend that demonstration project as far as we would allow them to. And so we have free labor, we have a commitment from them, and so I think that, you know, we have an opportunity with the grant to work with the Park District to sort of give a facelift and upgrade that trail down there. park district to sort of give a facelift and upgrade that trail down there. And to me, that's one of those issues that just improves quality of life in this town. And so I think we should try to map that out a little bit as we go forward.
Yes. So last on this slide, we have the Indian Hill commuter lot redevelopment. Council recently heard a presentation by Dial Development for the senior housing option on this lot. We do expect Dial to resubmit another concept version for the council to consider in the future, based on the feedback from their initial presentation. So next and finally is the new policy initiatives. So top of the list, we have our sustainability initiatives emanating from the IMEA contract renewal. There's growing consensus to actively pursue sustainability initiatives, including working and completing an climate action plan, solar incentives, working on how we currently approve solar projects and potentially streamlining that process so that we can get a higher rating on Soul Smart and make it easier for residents. Potential solar or battery developments on the landfill and energy efficiency investments and targets. So there was a draft sustainability support resolution that was presented at the last council meeting. So we will be bringing that forward on the June 17 meeting for consideration by council.
You know, you've asked, and rightly so, what are priorities? This is a priority. Okay, so this trustee handler, I think you have a meeting at the EFC maybe tomorrow night. I think the EFC ultimately has to be charged with what they're going to do. We need to know what Nick's going to be doing down at the plant. We know, we need to know who's going to be looking at the potential solar field out of the landfill. Other resident initiatives, I think, might emanate from a working group within the EFC, I would believe.
Right.
And so in terms of priority, I think we're all of the same mind on this, that this is something we need to crystallize loud and clear and soon.
Question for you, and I just, I have to, I've looked at this, and there seem to be a lot of priorities. And I just, I'm just trying to understand the staff's capacity and making some hard decisions.
I think we can double back on this and think about the priority. I think we've talked about, I think the post office is a priority.
Yes.
I think sustainability is a priority. I think the comp plan issue is actually a priority.
You got it. Hubbard Woods Street's cave.
And Hubbard Woods. I mean, obviously, east side stormwater is going through west side. I mean, some of that, I believe, Kristen. It's kind of moving along here.
Right.
So I mean, in terms of new staff initiative time, I think we could coalesce around four or five items here.
And obviously, this is different stat than the comp plan would be.
The sustainability, Scott, good point. I mean, Elise Steiner, this is what Elise, and she'll go strong into this.
Right, and the.
I'm with you. I just want to be purposeful and planful so the staff doesn't lose their mind.
And EFC is going to be a key, key part of this, and the Climate Action Plan is really going to be helpful as well. We will be doing a kickoff meeting with them later this month, and formulating the plan actually has a community engagement piece as well. So being able to engage with the residents and hear from them what their ideas are for sustainability is going to be really impactful.
There's one other element that I guess I'd like to put on the agenda for sustainability issue. How we, as a village, want to direct our representation in terms of policy, in terms of strategy, investment matters, right? We sit on the board. I think our vote will become a stronger element of that board in this figure. And I think that may ensure that our representative represents the essence of our village. I think it's something that's.
Let's, let's plan on talking about that after the 17th.
Yeah.
See where that goes and, and then, but I agree with you on that.
It's nothing that has to be done right.
Right, right. Good point. It's a good point.
Right, and I really, is a good. For that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So next is open space context and evaluation. So council will need to determine the priorities in this area of the feedback we've heard from residents on the desire for open space and what is open space? There's differing views on that and what the council priorities are in this area.
Well, sort of along that line, I feel like this has to come before discussions of the Indian Hill commuter lot development, the Crowne property, Green Bay, the post office, because all of those potentially incorporate or are completely open space. So how do we, how do we make decisions on these previously identified policies without having the discussion about what our principles are about open space?
So, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, I do, I struggle with this issue on open space because it's a trade off, right?
Right.
You know, I want to have a park, but something else might, you know, how do you establish principles without really understanding what the trade offs are? I think that's really hard, because it's so easy to establish principles without having to come up against another principle that you have, right? We just saw that in the IMEA, right? We all had conflicting principles that really forced us to kind of think through things. When it comes to open space, I think it's kind of the same thing. You know, should we have, should we have a parking lot, or should we have a building for people to age in place? Well, those are two competing principles that will change how you think about open space.
And it, well, and I struggle with a parking lot being open space. I mean.
So do I, but yeah, yeah.
So, but yeah, maybe.
Well, I guess.
Well, because it's not really.
That's the question. Is open space undeveloped space or open space or?
That still can be used for something in the future.
Right, and.
This is the conversation.
Yeah, right.
But I guess, so what I'm saying is to have this, if we have this discussion, after we've covered all these other ones, there isn't much left to.
But I guess that's my question. Why have a discussion about that when it could preclude? If we come out and say, okay, that's a priority, having open space and parking lots are considered open space, that could have precluded redevelopment of Grace Church. That could preclude redevelopment and getting a better parking solution for new trier staff and students at Indian Hill. So I guess that's my concern when you state, have those statements, it could have a chilling effect on good ideas.
Well, not necessarily, because that's what exceptions are for. I mean.
Yeah, but if I'm a developer.
Yeah.
Which you are.
But if a developer were looking at Winnetka, saying, I want to bring ideas, oh, well, they've got this open space policy, so I'm not even going to.
Right, so if it's.
Not advocating for or against one. I'm just saying that it seems like after some of these major discussions on some of the last open space that we have in the community, to decide on those, then come up with a discussion and evaluation of what our open space concept is, seems for the fact.
But again.
I would just scratch, I wouldn't do it, but.
Yeah, because I think we talk about the comp plan, too, like as potential development sites, whether people want, I don't know, I like.
Let's, let's, let Kristen and Rob give this some thought, how we might address this topic. I mean, Rob Apatop's right, this was a caucus platform. You know, it's just one of the six caucus platforms or whatever, but it was one, and we should.
Going forward?
Yeah.
Well, no, it was in 2024.
Right.
So, yeah, it was a question in 20, but that had fairly overwhelming or result, results. Some of the results were a little ambiguous. This one was pretty overwhelming. But again, it didn't, it didn't get into the context. It didn't talk about parking lots versus parks and things like that. So I think as opposed to batting around the ideas right here, let's come back on this one and think, give some thought to it.
Okay, and then the final item is transportation and mobility. We talked a little bit about this already with regards to the east-west challenge with safe bike paths. Additionally, there has been some interest expressed in regulating the e-bikes and the scooters. Some other towns have taken action there. So this may be an issue where the council want to, wants to consider or has community interest in considering what types of regulations are necessary here.
I know the police chief has been working with a regional group of chiefs on this issue. I mean, this is not a Winnetka only issue. It was mentioned, someone mentioned earlier about the e-bikes and the scooters and are they 12-year-olds? Are they 20-year-olds? Are they on the Green Bay Trail? You know, so I think there is an appetite to have some. Deerfield has an ordinance, sent it to me, a resident up in Hubbard Woods sent it to me. I think we need to address this before something happens.
Yeah, there's levels of speed here that are being maintained by 10-year-olds, eight-year-olds.
That's correct. That's correct.
My old.
Yeah.
And so I think that the chief, I know he's working on it. Maybe he can come to council at some point and tell us where he is. But I, I kind of feel like we shouldn't put our head in the sand on this one, because something could happen.
Yeah. It's been, there's been a lot of close calls, including by my, by Claire's house, where it was.
What's that?
By my daughter's house in Rosewood and Elm.
Sure.
There's not a stop sign there. E-bike, it was a scooter right across the intersection without stopping. Almost got clipped.
Could be a 14-year-old.
I was always hit with a guy doing a wheelie on a, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
And this is just two examples where we're sitting here, yeah.
We should, we should look what the ordinances are that are around us.
I know the chief is working on it, so I'd like to, I don't want to step on his toes on this, but maybe he could let us know where he stands.
And, and I thought we had an existing ordinance, too, because we won at an auction, an electric scooter back in 2010, and then we were promptly told that we couldn't use it except in our driveway. So I thought we had something, too, so that would be helpful.
And I know the state law was recently updated, so I will ask chief to prepare an update for council.
Scott, you were going to say something?
I was going to change the topic in terms of, there's not enough stuff here, right? We need, we need more ideas.
This is the, the formal part of the presentation is done.
I did have one.
Yep.
Idea. In terms of moving, I'm thinking in terms of zoning, right? A resident wants to do an addition, you know, remodeling, whatever. Having a self-help tool which enables them to work with their architect, plug information in, determine, you know, where are their issues, what has been problems in the past? You know, I don't, and I'm, I have a supposition here, which is, do our staff spend a lot of time answering questions from people who bring their plans in and say, are there problems here? What could I do? Will this, you know, will this be approved? If, if this is not a 2026 thing, this is probably going to take time to investigate. But I got to believe that there are tools that are out there or, you know, will be out there soon, that would relieve some of that burden and help residents develop their own answers.
So I do know we spend in community development, a significant amount of time engaging with residents and interested developments, to your point. As far as the technology, that's something we could definitely look into. My sense is it's evolving.
Yeah.
And not at a point of readiness now, especially with some of the complexities that we have.
There is a product that we were looking at as a company that, and I can't remember the name of it, actually, we're piloting. It's not available in Illinois, but it allows us to type in, you know, property information, and we immediately get all the restrictions, you know, setbacks, all that information, so we can kind of real-time design, you know, our projects. It's available in California and Illinois. It's taking some AI tools, which is, I think, what you're alluding to, and just publicly available information, but it's, it doesn't have information for the Midwest yet. So those tools are probably in development, and there's a lot of startups doing it. Is, I'd be, it's an interesting question, because it would reduce staff time. But I got to believe that most of those interactions are probably with residents who don't have, you know, architects familiar with the village code.
Exactly.
Our village code, I think, you know, especially if we do some of the streamlining and updating, it could take out some of the subjectivity that is in the code that I think is the biggest issue, like people don't know, you know, especially on stormwater and some of that stuff.
Scott, you're, you're kind of getting to a point of encouraging village staff. They would see this stuff on a data, whether it's in the engineering department, community development, water and electric. There's probably a lot of technology that could improve our systems. They would see it. They should be encouraged to bring that forward and.
And I think it's, yes, yes. And I think in addition to that, it may be a conversation around, well, this is not available quite yet, or to utilize this, we have to undertake certain things. I'm sure there's all kinds of documents that would need to be scanned. So eventually, that technology and other technology will be available.
Right.
We really don't want to hit that point and say, well, now we got to spend three years kind of digitizing everything. Maybe it's a process of, we can do a little bit each year to be at a point where we are ready.
But it, I mean, I think the, all the codes are available online. Like, if you want to know you're in the R2, what's permitted, what's your setback is, you can find that really quickly.
And you could also, I'm not sure we want to necessarily go down this path, but you could also look at all the ZBA meetings, scan that and have that be accessible in terms of where, you know.
I mean, do you really want to create a precedent database? I don't know.
That's, you know, but these are the things that I think if we begin to think now, we can, you know.
I think.
Can have an approach.
I think that there are companies out there that are working on these tools that people could purchase.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's necessarily, it's a heavy lift.
And that's where, if, if we know what it is, it might be, okay, 2029, 2030, you know, let's, what does it take to get ready for that?
And to your point, Scott, we are still very paper reliant, and so getting the source data that would be accessed into a digital format is going to be the first step in the challenge. And we actually had budgeted that in the budget before the pandemic, 2019. That was going to be a big initiative that was on hold, and we've recently taken it back up and have started to research options for record retention and harnessing some new AI tools to be able to more effectively access those once they're in digital format. But the getting them to the digital format is still a very manual process.
There's only one other thing I might suggest. I don't know if we want to do it or not, which I've talked to people that have built new homes and renovated homes in our fee structure. I think here's fairly breathtaking, and so I just wanted to, you know, a few years since we've even looked at it, and the question becomes, are we, I want to make sure we're fair to our residents, both new construction and renovation.
Hang on, one second. Liz, do you want to, would you like to say anything or not? Okay. Okay. Okay, good. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, the fee structure is looked at, at budget.
Yes.
You know, maybe look at it again and.
And we did do a detailed analysis when David Shown was still here.
I remember that.
On how our neighboring communities determine the fees and the permitting.
That's a good part of it.
And, and looked at that.
I mean, fees are based on square footage.
Right, I know.
So if people are building big houses, they're going to have big fees.
Their fees go up.
And they should.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it should also reflect the amount of staff time associated. I mean, that's how you, I mean.
Yeah.
We, we did adjust him to incentivize renovation versus demolition. I, that we did in the fee structure.
And I think we give a.
To go, right?
And I think we, for preservation, for historic preservation, there's a reduction in fees, so.
Yeah, I think that's it. Well, me too. I'll take a look. I'll dig in.
So we can open this up for new ideas. The only new idea I had, and it's not a new idea, because I know you're looking into it, and I know Rob's looking into it, and that is, is there an appetite amongst this group to move away from paper agenda materials to electronic? Please? Yes?
We talked about a really nice split. Yes, there is, but I think that, that we might be able to have, like, it's nice to be able to write notes on your memos from the staff, although if we get the iPads and we can write the notes on the iPads, perhaps. But I think definitely. But I think definitely all the big attachments.
All the support documents.
All that should definitely be digital.
The thought, I believe, is to to pair this idea with new technology for certainly for our group, and maybe it would extend on down to other commissions and boards and so on.
My last packet was 800 pages unplanned.
So I think, Kristen, the green light is there to start rolling this out if you can. Think about how you want to do it.
Yes, and so Civic Clerk, which is our software that we use to create and publish the online agendas. It has a backend board facing interface that allows you to write the notes and save your notes and and have access to that information in a digital way.
Baby steps.
Rather than the public facing where, you know, you'd have to download it as a PDF. So we already have that capability. We just haven't rolled it out yet. So technology for sure to make sure that you have the device that would allow you to view and take the notes and then training on how to use that board facing portal.
I want to add, that changes me to full, wholehearted yes, get rid of all the paper because, number one, you save your notes. You know, they're still accessible to you. And number two, if somebody wants to see just the memo part, they can print it out at home. So that could alleviate.
Out for you.
Right.
I think.
True, if it's long, yeah.
Office be willing to print out?
Yes, we understand that it's a transition, so yes, we'd be willing to.
All the nice lettering and the candy.
Marina's sad. She won't be able to personally address with all the colors anymore. She does.
I love that.
That is true.
So just to keep this moving, because I was so criticized over the last meeting and timeframe.
Yeah, Bob.
I was. I was. I know. I don't know, but somebody did. Some people did, many people, but anyway.
That was the same length as the French, French Open.
Okay.
Five and a half hours.
I get the, I get the point. I think from this conversation, Kristen, can you, from the tone of the input and so on, maybe we can, maybe you can craft a little what you understand the priorities to be. And I I still think that maybe we can build out what could be a schedule for study sessions between now and next spring or so. And then we can all look at that and say, gee, I think this should be slotted earlier or whatever. But I think maybe you can take this input.
I'll work with Rob and we'll give some feedback and what we heard from the conversation and then give you that draft to your point that you could give feedback and we can finalize.
Does that make sense?
So I do have one more idea.
Okay, got an idea guy here.
I've been waiting.
Okay.
So our focus on the council tends to be very, what I would say, operational, right? It's basically, we're looking out 18 months, maybe, you know, sometimes a little longer because projects may take a little longer, right? But but there's never a point where, once a year, once every two years, you know, for a term, you step back and you say, well, what's going to be happening five years from now? Like, what what are the issues? What are the opportunities that we should be thinking about now, right? And and I'm not sure that, it's not fully fleshed out, but you know, you think back, almost every business, right? Elise says at some point.
Strategic plan.
What's our strategic plan? What's our long term?
That's the 2040 comp plan. We just spent years on that, and we were anticipating into the future to 2040.
Yeah, I mean, so there's there's things like what you think about it five years, what you're thinking at 10 years. I mean, it really wasn't just somebody's idea of, okay, what, this is zoning and this is maybe, you know, there was a lot in there for.
Right, and you know, prior to that, it was the 2020 comp plan, right?
No, but the 2020 comp, that's my point, the 2020 comp plan wasn't a comp plan. It was a bunch of residents who wrote, you know, some kind of guidance and kind of direction, but it really didn't lay out a work plan or anticipate 100% that we can't anticipate everything. We certainly wouldn't have anticipated a pandemic. But I think it does a really good job of like, there's check in points and there's all these kind of things that we should be doing.
Checking, yeah, so my only, my point is, we don't have a regular cadence where we step back, whether it's a study session or maybe it's during the budgeting process to say, okay, what what have we learned? What are we seeing, right? It's not to redo the comp plan by any means, but at least to pause and call and call into question, what are the assumptions? Are there, is there new data that we should be thinking about? You know, AI was not thought about during the comp plan. What is that?
Can we, can we make this a part of the conversation with the study session on the comp plan?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, you know, okay.
I think that.
To Tina's, to Tina's point, we can accomplish, I'm not looking to put it in more meetings.
No.
But I'm, I think we can accomplish a couple of things.
Yeah.
On a study session that we know that we, if we're concise and we stay on target.
Correct.
And and keep these means tight and to them.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. But I I think that the comp plan.
The point, Scott, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that that gets into strategic plan. I thought about capital, more strategic planning financially. How are we going to slot all this in here when we get our capital plan at the end of the year? There are some big ticket prices.
Yeah.
On on some of these.
And and also, has Scott been given a copy of the comp plan? I know it's online, but you have a copy? Okay.
It's worth, it's definitely worth going through, yeah.
I've actually gone through it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, anything else before we open this up to public comment? Commissioner Coto.
Oh, my gosh.
Would you like to come and speak to our group and say hello?
Sir, sir.
Please. Yes, we're we're going to close our discussion here, and we're going to open the Florida public comment, and you can introduce yourself, and thank you for being here.
Not at all. It's a, it's always a fascinating process. Christina Coto, 1149 Ash, 30 year resident. Obviously, I'm most interested in the things that, the items that you've identified that intersect with the Park District. And so I had a couple of questions because it looks like buried in the, I think you've got 30 items. I I calculated here 35 items. I mean, it's a, it's a substantial list. Your Tower Road Beach are working with R CPI. Who are you working with there?
Who is our representative that we're working with? I would have to get that name to you because Tim Sloth is leading that initiative, so I can get that to you.
I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just curious because our person has left.
Okay.
And so just in the interest of sharing.
You're talking about the Tower Road pier repair?
Yeah, and then the R CPI, which is the Regional Coastal Plan Initiative, which is a resource for all of us to benefit from. I would just love to know who your contact is. And then I would also love to know, not that any of it goes anywhere except to the village's directions, but the amount, what is the amount of the grant for the Green Bay Trail?
It was 875,000, was it? I think it was 875,000, Christina, in that range.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
It's slightly less than the plan that was developed by Lakota. Yeah, slightly less. There's a little bit of a mismatch there.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we flushed out the the trail plan for those funds yet. I mean, you're working on it.
We're working on it.
Yes, the Lakota plan was millions of dollars.
Yeah.
From start to finish, yeah.
But it was beautiful. It's a beautiful plan.
Yeah.
And then the, I think the other question is the timing for the southeast Winnetka stormwater study. I understand you've got a planning session, and then I just wanted to kind of see how the, and I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but I just wanted to have an understanding of when the construction might happen and when the construction might, like, these are all best guesses at this point.
We need to hear from Strand, which I think we'll hear before year end, and it would be phased in, no doubt, just like West Side was.
Correct.
And so I don't know that we have an answer on that right now.
Yeah.
We don't.
Love to have an answer, but I don't think we do.
And also, not only the plan, but how to fund the plan.
How to fund it, correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
And then just based on the start to finish of the Southwest, which I think was an eight year process. It was an IGA, and then the IGA took a little time, and then there was an eight year sort of rollout and phasing. And it's obviously still rolling out, so I I'm just trying to figure out our piece in this, so.
But hopefully, the IGA wouldn't take as long because you wouldn't, you would have local entities, not Cook County Forest Preserve District, right?
I mean, this is, this is half the scope of West Side.
Right.
It's half the scope in terms of.
Right.
Context of the project as well as the cost of the project, roughly, according to Strand. So I think that's right, Tina, that, you know, there are fewer entities. I mean, obviously, we're dialoguing with Nutria right now. I think IDOT would come into play with Shore Road. And so, yes, there's going to be some some work to do on this front, but probably not quite as complex as West Side.
But we would have to dialogue with the Park District.
Oh, with the Park District, for sure.
Right, so.
We would appreciate that, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. No, those are sort of my questions, and I, you know, every time I come to one of these and each time we speak, each time we speak, there's an impressive list that you're tackling.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I appreciate this. It's been very informative.
Well, thank you for being here in your.
Not at all.
In your role.
In your official capacity.
Surprised I'm by myself, yeah.
Yeah, it's good to have you here. Thank you.
A question back to you on, we were talking about bike routes, east west bike routes, that, because that came out of the the Park Study.
Yeah.
Has that still been talked about? Is there any more thoughts on it?
So we're in the process. We just finished the resident input for the Comprehensive Master Plan. And this is a big effort for us. It's a big and unusual effort for us. It's bigger than anything that we've ever done. We've done a series of strategic plans, but this is just a big step back. That's sort of like your 2040 and our lakefront 2030. So our comp plan is intended to guide us for the next 30 years. The initiatives, there is a great deal of interest in east-west bike routes.
Yeah.
We don't know how we help with that. We don't, we don't quite yet know. But we do have some, we do have some ideas, so. But it is, bikability is really important. Connecting parts of the Green Bay Trail is very important.
Well, perhaps that could be a collaborative effort between the Park District and the village.
Yeah, I I think, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, not at all. My pleasure. Thank you for your, thank you for your hard work.
I don't see anyone else in the audience, so we will close public comment, bring it back here. Any other discussions before we move on with our evening? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Courtney.